All right, let's get this party started. If you could all get your seats, we are ready to start. Welcome to the Monday, May 20, 2019 work session of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted to have you all here with us. We have some students who have taken a sudden interest in the ongoings of local government. We appreciate you all coming here.
What's that?
It's an assignment for our government.
So you guys want to get your picture in the newspaper? How about it, Nick? You want to get a photo of these guys?
I've got one already.
You've got one already? All right. All right, so.
What class is it? Just up to my notes.
AP Government, Mr. Deal and Ms. Mahoney's, right? So she has asked that we post someone at the door to make sure you guys don't leave until the meeting ends. So there will be no bathroom passes either. So you guys are stuck here for, what, about four hours or so till we finish up?
We'll talk really fast.
Yeah, we'll talk fast, maybe three hours and 45 minutes. But thank you all for coming. Hopefully you'll get the credit you deserve and need. Why don't we start, Mr. Shields, with our budget amendment, the first item on the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. First, I just want to note for the public that Councilmember Ross Litkinhouse and Councilmember Dave Snyder have both announced that they're way out of town on travel, and they asked us to let -- to announce that at the beginning of the meeting. And secondly, Granicus is down nationwide, and so access electronically to the materials is not available for those who are trying to track the materials during the meeting. Apologies for that. Or is there an update on that?
Well, Granicus is still down, but the council meetings have now been posted on the council website, and Planning Commission is in process.
Okay, so we're trying to load it directly so people can access it on the city's website instead of Granicus. Okay, so we have two money items. First, first is an FY19 budget amendment, and then the second is the bonding resolution for the high school, library, and fellows acquisition, among a few other odds and ends. And then after those two money items, we'll then shift to the comp plan updates for the remainder of the meeting. So for the first two items, we'll turn it over to the CFO, Ms. Kieran Bowa.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. We have for you the fiscal year 2019's last budget amendment, which requests 706,987. Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. So this resolution request ordinance requests 706,987 increase in appropriation in the general fund. This comprises of, first of all, a request of appropriation of $300,000 for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project to pay for additional legal expenses, commercial real estate advisors, and feasibility, sorry, and subdivision plat services, costs related to that. And this brings the project budget, which is currently at 1.45 million over the last five years for planning for this project, this will bring the project budget up to 1.75 million. We are proposing to use, in the past, for such activities, we have used the capital reserve, and this time, we are proposing, in lieu of that, using current year's interest income revenues that are in excess projected in amount of 600,000 approximately for the current fiscal year. As of May 15th, we have already collected roughly 550 over, so we're projecting that we'll be 600 over for this revenue category for the year.
This is on the money we've already borrowed?
No, this is on the unassigned fund balance, and the capital reserves, the interest that we get in our VML, LGIP, sorry, the long investment pool that we do together with the VML. And it's running at about 2%, 2/4% right now on interest. So we budgeted a lower amount, and the interest that we are getting on our investments is much better now.
Okay.
And if you recall, when we did the fiscal year 20 budget, this is the category that we increased the budget for for next year.
That was 300?
That was 300K for West Falls Church?
That's correct.
Got it, okay.
And another request relating to the school project is a request of 40,000 for reappropriation of proceeds from the issuance of the 2016 bonds. These proceeds were intended to be used to build a spreader rack for the property yard. Instead, we are asking to use this money for mulch shelter at the property yard. This would just be enough to do the necessary asphalt base for this shelter at the property yard. They would actually have to buy a yard, which would cost another 150,000, but at this time, we're asking for 40,000. This is the project that's currently at the George Mason High School, the mulch yard, so we have to move it with the upcoming construction. So this is the plan. We need to fund it. We're going to fund it in pieces. So this is the funding we've identified so far. And they are able to do this work within the current fiscal year, so we're asking for this funding now. And with the year end, when we see some more, the projections for where we're ending with some specific departments, and if there are any savings, then we'll come back in September when we do the other budget amendments for additional funding. Next is staff request an increase to the appropriation for the City Hall renovation project for a total of 750,000. And that would come from 400,000 from underspending in the current fiscal year between savings, vacancy savings from Information Technology Department, and jail costs that are reduced due to the lesser number of inmates, saving of 230,000 there. And in addition to this 400, we're requesting 350,000 from the interest revenues from the 2018 bond issuance. This is the 22-plus million bond issuance that we had done in 218 that we're drawing down, but there is interest income. Usually, the interest bond proceeds, interest revenue has been, could be used to fund projects which they are issued for or to pay for debt service. We have done a little bit of the both in the past, so we're proposing to use that. In addition to this.
Karen, sorry, so the 300 is from underspending from operating. 350, you said, was from last year's bond issuance, where essentially we projected a higher interest rate, got a better deal.
No, it's how we draw down.
Okay.
So we are drawing down, but we got like, we got 22 million, but we're drawing down. There was 6.5 million for the school. There was 11 point something for the City Hall. So we're drawing down, and while some of the money is sitting there, it's collecting some interest. So those are the interest, and those are restricted use on the bond proceed interest. It's not like the interest on the unassigned fund balance, which is discretionary, so this funding is more restricted.
And what's our typical practice from that? Does the money need to go back to the projects for that bond issuance, or can it go to another project?
It can go to any of the projects within that issuance. It's flexible that way. Or it could go back to paying for the debt service.
Okay.
And we've done both. If you recall, we had parks funding, so we used a portion of this for the big chimney, 115,000. And in the past, we have used a little bit for Mount Daniel, and otherwise, we have used typically this funding interest income for paying down debt service.
All right, other questions?
I have one more.
Oh, okay.
Not done. We are also requesting to transfer current year's debt service to capital reserve. We have a saving of 225 roughly, and that is from the better coupon interest rate that we got on the 2018. We had budgeted higher amounts, and the budgeted to actual, we are expecting to earn 25,000. We are proposing to transfer 150,000 of that to the capital reserve as we take on the, realize that based on the model that we had done, we will be drawing down more, so this will add on to the capital reserve. And 75,000 to be used as, for cost of the short-term notes issuance that we'll discuss in the next item. Additionally, there, in the special transportation fund, there is some reprogramming of funds, reprogramming of funds between programs and projects. One is 25, roughly 25,000 unspent funds from downtown reinvestment project to South Washington POA to cover additional costs of utility undergrounding. And then there is transfer of unspent funds from the bridge replacement project of 66,300 some to the traffic signals project for Northwest and Great Falls traffic signal and intersection improvements, and reappropriation of 40,000. This was a three-year grant funding, so we're just reappropriating for the same thing. It was a WOD trail, great streets project going towards construction of the Walter Mess Plaza along the trail. So that concludes my report. Open to any further questions you may have.
All right, do we have some questions? Looks like we've got a few. Vice Mayor Connolly.
Ms. Bowa, the item number one, 1A1, you have $300,000. Our interest income is up by $600,000. What are we doing with the rest of that? Are we still just holding that in reserves till we need it?
We are, because we are certain, not certain on every single category. We are keeping some buffer for the personal property that we have seen that we haven't been able to meet the budget. We are still accounting for the business license, so we're not requesting to appropriate every single dollar of what we have.
Okay, so we'll use that, that we may use that in a future budget amendment, or we may put it in capital reserve.
Yeah, and we'll bring that to us part of the year-end report.
Okay.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just start off by saying that I support putting money in reserve, capital reserve that we have apparently no use for, so I think goes to the careful stewardship of the city administration that we're able to generate these funds and we get to basically put in the bank. What does concern me, though, is general fund increase that on 1A2 for, where you generate 350K and it moves to using it for the City Hall project. And then in 21A2, 750, which I guess is the overall number, to also be applied to the City Hall renovation project. And I would be remiss, as representatives of the taxpayer of the city, if I didn't ask you whether coming into these appropriations, we're just, the City Hall project seems to be, quite frankly, a bottomless pit here, where we, every month or so, we pour in another million dollars. So let me just, first of all, ask you, because we first saw that it was going to be a very expensive project. Last month, we approved an amount above what was requested to pay for IT improvements, and so do you, can you tell me what happened to those funds that we approved? I don't recall what they were, but I think it was 112 that was requested, and we bumped it up to 150. Where are you on?
350.
350. What's the 100,000 dollars between friends?
325 was requested, and you.
Yeah, so where are you on that?
We are, we are still, those contractors are still at work at City Hall, so first, let me thank the council for that appropriation on that contract.
You're going to need it, right?
At this point, we're treating it as a contingency, so we have not needed it yet, but it is, we will give you a report, and it is possible that we will need it. There are some things that have come up as the work goes on, as you predicted. For instance, some of the doors in the police department where they needed some additional locks. So we're treating it as a contingency, and we'll give you a report on our, on our use of those funds.
Now, City Hall is at, architects like to call it sailing a building through, through time. I mean, that's what you do with a, with a building, and of course, these things all have their costs and associated resource requirements. How close are we actually to getting a functional City Hall with regard to, I won't even talk about the chambers, because I understand this is a special build, it's like the operating theater of a hospital, but the rest of it with regard to the HVAC and electrical systems and things like that? Is that under control here? Is contractor providing diligent completion measures, doing the punch list and all those things?
There is a long punch list, and there is commissioning that needs to happen on all the systems. We are, I would call it debugging a lot of the systems, like the HVAC system and the locks. The audiovisual has not been installed yet in the council chambers because there are still some HVAC issues in that new building. So are we satisfied? No, we're not satisfied. We've got a lot of work to do. We are in the building, so the building is functioning, but it's not functioning at its designed capacity. And in terms of the numbers, we have been to council for additional contract approvals and for the lease extensions and things like that, but this is the first budget appropriation that you have had before you for the project as a whole. So the 750,000 is inclusive of everything in terms of the new money for the project. And as we've discussed in the past, we will do a final reconciliation and report out on the total costs. We are still sorting those out with hit construction, so I would anticipate that would be late summer or early fall before we really know what, what the final cost will be. I think we would say it won't be any higher than this, but the other side has some other points, and so we're going to have to resolve those on a, on a case by, you know, go through a whole list of disputed items and then reach a resolution on them.
Yeah, so, you know, this is the most difficult phase, as they say in project management. The first 90%, the project takes 90% of the time, and the remaining 10% takes the other 90% of the time. And this seems to be a true form here. So are you having discussions internally with respect to how to address what appears to be the contractor dragging?
Yes.
Their feet? Are you having discussions with your procurement team to talk about deductive, unilateral deductive change orders and just buying those services, getting it done, backcharging them, and let's the courts figure it out?
Probably all the detailed things we've discussed in the past in closed session, and if we're talking about negotiating strategy, we should probably do that in closed session as well. But it is, the whole team is together, and we're, we're working through what is the best way to resolve these in the city's interest.
All right, well, thank you for that, City Manager. I have to think that you all are doing the best that you can. This is a very complicated project, and as a word, you're building the plane as you're flying it, so let's hope that we can land this thing in a useful place. Thank you so much.
Mr. Duncan?
I am confident it will be usefully landed, and that we will end up with a City Hall that will serve the city well for at least the next couple of decades. But I do appreciate the attention to watching every penny, as represented by questions that Mr. Z posed and that we've discussed in other settings. It does teach us that the business of rehabbing an older building is fraught with peril, and we need to keep that lesson in mind as we approach the library renovation, which also has potential to be a good project, but is not going to come without some of the same kind of issues that we've had with City Hall, I think. So let's just be aware of that. My question is on 2 to the Northwest and Great Falls traffic signal project and other intersection improvements. So with this money, is that project on, you know, a pathway to completion that is in the nearer or middle or later term?
Near. So that, this is a project that's been done together with Fairfax County, and I think at the beginning, we all thought it'd be a wonderful way to get things done.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably been frustrating for Fairfax County, and it's been slower for us as well, because we always had to sort of go back and forth between or to contracting authorities. But it is in the near term now.
Okay, great, because that is, that's probably one of the busiest small intersections in Northern Virginia. You know, you think about the amount of traffic that goes through that at rush hour, and so I think improving the safety and pedestrian access there especially could be important. And that same item, the money coming from the bridge replacement project, remind me, where we ended up with? The Oak Street Bridge up above TJ, is that, are we still doing that, or is that on hold?
That's the, that's the next project in line, maybe, Ms. Mester? Would you like to speak to that? You've had the latest information.
That is the next project in line. Unfortunately, we did not receive funding in the proposed zip that's before the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Due to the result of changing some funding eligibility and the prioritization in the state, went to Hampton Roads, there are limited funding. So the staff team is working on some other funding alternatives so that we can proceed, but Oak Street is the next one in the queue.
Is that project as big as the project on Van Buren Street was for us?
Pretty similar, because it also has structural underpinning pieces that need to be rebuilt. It just doesn't have that pedestrian piece that was failing at Van Buren, but it'll have the same design and look, as well as fixing the stormwater underpinnings.
Okay, well, let's hope for the best. I presume that no school buses are going to, you know, collapse into the creek or anything like that. There's nothing imminent danger.
We have no imminent danger, but it is a restricted weight limit bridge because of the structural issues.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Hank, before we get, continue on, just for our eager students in the audience, we are talking about budget. This is a budget amendment, just so you know. And so we passed the budget, I guess about a month ago, for the full year, but then things changed over the course of the year. We need some more money for this, and maybe not as much for that. So what we're talking about is a budget amendment to provide some more money for the school site and the 10 acres of development, because we've got a lot of legal expenses and consultant expenses, because it's very complicated, some City Hall overruns we're talking about, but we're talking about reprogramming some money from other things, and maybe not as much money was needed. So that's what we're talking about, just for your information, and people are asking questions about how it's being spent and what's being proposed, and I imagine we've got a couple more coming here. Mr. Z, and then Ms. Ardi.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So in its own way, we're, we're finding little pockets of money here and there to repurpose them, reprogramming them for, for more needy projects, and if this were the national stage, we would be having a discussion about taking money out of military to pay for a wall on the southern border, but since we're not that, this is not our discussion. I do want to also ask you with regard to section 1, section 11B, where it looks as if you're going to move the leaf mulch and build a base to, to hold it. So I guess it is a, it is a hallmark of this city that we collect the leaves, mulch it, and then we give it back to the people, and they do wonderful things with it. And for a period of about two months, this city has this wonderful aroma of leaf mulch. And so, so will this move that facility? Is this all we need for that?
No, this is the start of it. We think the total cost will be just over $150,000. This is to create a, basically a paved base where the leaves will be stored. Then the next thing to do is to acquire a structure similar to the salt barn. There would be a backstop for the mulch, so that when we run it through the grinder, which is about a three-day operation, where all the leaves are dumped into the grinder and shredded, they get, they'll get blown towards that structure, so they, so we will attempt to contain some of the blow-off and the debris. I will say this, this is going to be an experiment. The, we do have neighbors close to the property yard. It's going to be a tight site. We're working it through in a way that we think is going to work, but there will be, you know, as we do this next year for the first time, there probably will be some comment on it, and we're just going to have to work through that and figure out how to do it the best, best way that we can. The other change that's happening in the property yard is we are moving the fence between us and Don Byer Volvo. There was an agreement struck 25 years ago to allow Don Byer to use a portion of the property yard for vehicle storage. So we're reclaiming that property, and that's going to be used for school bus storage. So those are two things that are, that traditionally have been housed up on the high school site that are now moving to the property yard site. It is going to make the property yard site tighter, more densely used, and I think this, the mulch program in particular, is one that we're reasonably confident is going to work well, but we also have 11 new neighbors now right on the other side of the WOD, and we're going to manage it as best we can, but we may have to do a little bit of trial and error to get this dialed in right next fall.
Appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Ms. Ardi?
Great, thank you, Mayor. So partly for my benefit, but also the students, this is a pretty long and lengthy budget amendment. So if you could help me just kind of recap, and I know that the way the staff report was written to kind of be clear about where the money's coming from, but I think it would be helpful for me to understand by project exactly how much money is going to the project, regardless of the source of money. So I took notes, and help me understand if these are, these numbers are correct. So I got down 300,000 more for the West Falls Church project, 40,000 for this mulch shelter we just talked about, 750 for City Hall, and then 225 for something, and I didn't catch that one.
So 225 is a saving in our debt service for the current fiscal year, of which 75,000 we are proposing to use for the debt issuance cost for the short-term notes, and 150,000 would be transferred to the capital reserve.
Got it. So my numbers are correct there?
That's correct.
So that's irregardless of the source of money, but that's just additional appropriations to those. And then, so the operating budget from FY19, because we're not, this is not an amendment to the budget we just passed, goes up by 750 or so? Is that?
700.
700,000 total?
706,000.
Okay. And just so for the students in the audience, that's about penny and a half, two pennies on the tax rate, equivalent of kind of increasing the operating budget. Is that right?
It's a little short of two, yeah.
Okay. So my second question is, I share some of Mr. Z's sentiments around kind of City Hall. We've just talked about City Hall and various, overages various times, and I think the term he used was kind of bottomless pit. Exactly how much overage have we had to date? Is it just the 750, because this is the first time we're appropriating?
That's correct. So this is the first time we're coming to seek money, additional funding for City Hall.
Okay.
Previously, the council has approved a contract increase for LV Comsec and the rent when we overstayed because of the extra month and a half.
Yeah. Where did that money come from? Is that part of the 750?
So this part of the 750 will address that 400 plus additional 350 for the change orders that we have to date, that we know of.
Okay. And then my third question, on the mulch shelter, so I understand that we're going to have to move where the current mulch pile is, and the 40,000 that you're asking for now is for the asphalt base. Sounds like it's the only option we have to move, so that we should expect this additional 110,000 or so to come to actually build the shelter itself in the next couple of months?
That's correct.
Okay. I'd actually just gotten a citizen comment today, I think, and actually forwarded to Ms. Walker, around the idea of kind of composting on-site. So to the extent that we can encourage homeowners to do that, well, I know that people really love the service, being able to rake their leaves out to the curb, and we vacuum it up, and then we deliver mulch, you know, we have mulch again for people. If it could help by encouraging, you know, the environmental benefits of composting on-site, that might also help our situation, too. So maybe there's just publicity we can do to help encourage that, because I think it's good for your grass beds and everything else, too.
That's exactly right.
So just a quick comment on that. And then my last question's really around the discussion we had at budget time around unfunded needs. So I know that all these projects we talked about between City Hall, the West Falls Church Project, all these transportation things are all really important, but we also talked about at budget time just a month ago about a bunch of unfunded needs that we had. And so the ones that come to mind, for example, is the registrar came to us pleading for a resource. We also have kind of city bread-and-butter services, like paving. Are we getting to all those unfunded needs, or does that need to be a discussion that we should be having now, when it, before we talk about appropriating these funds?
Well, when we realize additional funding or underspending, we look at, in totality, what the needs are, and this is like one-time money, so it's not an appropriate use for ongoing costs. So that is why we're not proposing to add any staff in any department with this one-time savings at this point. However, should any ongoing revenues become available when we do next year's revenues at some other point, we can look at those kind of requests, but at this point, there isn't any one-time, any ongoing funding source to look at and fund those needs.
Are there any one-time kind of unfunded needs that we had that we couldn't get to?
And those are the ones we are addressing, like this mulch need. And part of the CIP, we, of course, we have a huge list of unfunded needs.
So I guess for this mulch shelter, should it be a CIP project instead? Do we expect it to last more than five years, 10 years?
How did we handle the last one? I don't recall.
The last one was a CIP, when in totality, it was over 150,000 with more than five-year life, assuming we're not bond financing it. But for the 40,000, just for the pavement underpinning, that by itself wouldn't trigger it.
But if it's all part of the same project, and we're just trying to do part of it, I mean, I would just question that, you know, if that's better to be paid for out of our CIP fund? That's something I think we should consider. So in general, I appreciate that where we've got underspending, we can cover kind of projects we have on, especially on a difficult CIP project like City Hall, but I we have, especially in a difficult CIP project like City Hall, but I want to make sure that we're not squeezing our operating needs and not taking care of those bread and butter services because we're trying to cover our capital issues. So.
All right, are there any other questions? If not, let's move on to the next item. Thank you for that.
The next item before you is a resolution that would seek authorization for the issuance of debt as a two-step process with the issuance of up to $20 million of short-term notes in fiscal year '19 in the month of June to provide bridge funding for the high school construction and the acquisition of Fellow's Property project, followed by issuance of $76.46 million of general obligation bonds as a part of the second tranche of debt for the major capital projects as adopted by council. So by way of background, since we have, for the benefit of the audience and council, I will give a little bit of information. The city council adopted a full CIP, requiring the city to issue approximately $160 million debt in three tranches for major capital projects, including the George Mason High School, the City Hall, the library. This was back in July of 2017. The first tranche was issued in spring of 2018, last year, for $22 million for architecture and design phase of the high school and the construction of the City Hall and some sewer and stormwater fund projects and the Larry Graves Turfs. Those were the projects to be funded with the first issuance. The second tranche of debt for the construction of the high school is intended to be issued once the comprehensive agreement is executed with the West Falls Church Gateway Partners for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project for a long-term land lease for the 10-acre school site. So this is, we have the comprehensive agreement as approved by council on May 13th. This is to be followed by the special exceptions entitlement application, and the approval is expected in early July. And in the meantime, the school board authorized the school superintendent to sign the guaranteed maximum price, GMP 1, with Gilbane Building Company for the construction of the new George Mason High School. So in order to meet the immediate cash flow needs of the high school, as well as the acquisition of the Fellow's Property, staff recommends issuing debt in two steps. So the first one would be $20 million in short-term notes, $15.3 million for the high school, and $4.7 million for the acquisition of the parkland. So how this would work is that the short-term notes are issued as a line of credit, where principal will be drawn down only as needed based on the cash flow of the projects and the balance, and we just pay interest on whatever we draw down on a monthly basis. And any outstanding principal on these notes would be paid off when we do the second. So we are proposing to do the full bond issuance, the general obligation fall, which would pay down the balance of the outstanding principal on these notes, as well as cover funding for the library, stormwater improvements, sewer improvements, for a total of $73.00 million in projects, and including the issuance costs and the contingency, the underwriters' discount and the fixed costs for the issuance. It's a total of $76.46 million to be done. It would be 30-year level debt for George Mason High School and $60 million for that, and a 20-year level principal for the remaining projects. This would leave a balance of almost $51 million for the third tranche that we are hoping to issue later on next year for the remaining construction piece of the high school. There are terms proposed which are very, very conservative here. The interest rates are much better. However, as far as a buffer, we are requesting interest rates not to exceed more than 6.5%. And the principal price shall not be less than 99% of the par amount of the bonds. With that, I conclude my report and open to any questions that you may have.
All right. Do we have questions? Mr. Z?
Well, I think the issue's very simple here, what you're asking. For those in the audience listening in, do we just go full bore and issue permanent long-term 30-year bond debt and draw on that, or do we basically take out a bridge? And so I think what I'm hearing is that you're recommending we take a $20 million bridge until this fall, and they'll get the schools and a whole bunch of things, including parkland, just being taken care of until the fall. So I think that's the issue in a nutshell, even though it took 120 lines, 162 lines to say all that. Did I capture that?
Pretty much.
Pretty much? Okay. So let me just say that I think this is a prudent and carefully thought-out approach. I certainly do support that, so that we take out a small chunk, 20 million now, and we true it up in the fall. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hardy?
So I generally agree with that. I think taking out less debt on the city, whether we call it kind of a short-term bridge loan or full bond, is generally pretty prudent. Let me make sure I understand this. So our original plan was we were going to issue the CIP debt in three tranches. We did one last year at $22 million. The plan was the summer we would do one for $76 million. The new revised plan, given that we have this escrow payment, means that you're proposing instead of doing that tranche number two, we do this $20 million kind of bridge loan short-term debt, and then in the fall, we then go back and do the full second tranche and pay off that $20 million. Is that correct?
Right. So essentially, the total debt assumed by the city over the two transactions would not exceed $76.46 million.
Okay. And if I read the staff report correctly, the cost of doing it this revised two-step way is $75,000?
Mm-hmm, for the short-term note. And we're proposing to use the current year savings and debt service to fund that.
Okay. So if we were doing it the original plan, it wouldn't cost the $75,000 to issue this debt? Okay, so that is incremental cost. Got it. Now, I remember when the schools did their presentation, their GMP 2 is actually coming up August this year. Does this bridge loan cover us through their GMP 2?
This bridge loan covers, according to the cash flow provided by their builder, it'll cover them through October. Invoices are paid a month after, so it will cover us almost through November.
Okay. And then my third question is, I think from last week's discussion, we talked about the escrow payment of the 6.5 million from the West Falls Church developers coming in June, July timeframe. How does that timing of when actually the city gets money for essentially signing this deal match up to the short-term loan and the actual second tranche of the bonds we're talking about?
Essentially, how the payment, the lease payment, is that that goes into the capital reserve, and we are drawing down capital reserve to make our debt service payments. So as per the model that we had done, we are going to draw down, we are drawing down $2.8 million in fiscal year '20. We're going to be drawing down $6.3 in '21, almost $7 million in '22. So the $6.5 million that we're getting as the payment from the escrow will go into the reserve that we're going to be drawing down over the next few years for debt service.
Let me try to rephrase that. When are we actually taking out this short-term bridge loan?
June of this year, before the end of the fiscal year. We want to close by June 25th.
Will that be before we get money in the escrow?
Yes.
Okay.
So the money will go into escrow at the end of June, and one of the goals would be to get that out of escrow, to break escrow, have it be a permanent payment to the city before we go to the markets for the issuance of the $76 million. So we would anticipate that to be in August.
So money will be in escrow, then we take out the bridge loan. Hopefully, we'll be out of escrow before we do the full second tranche.
That's the sequence.
Got it. So I think that sequence is important because I think the commitment we made to people was that we would have a signed comprehensive agreement, which we authorized you to do last week, but I think the other important part is that we said we would have money in our hands. And so now with this new escrow mechanism, I think the sequence is important. So we have to have money in escrow, and then whether you call it a short-term bridge loan or a bond, it's still an obligation for the city. So I don't want us to be taking out money, whether it's $20 million or $76 million, until we have money in escrow. And then hopefully, we don't take out the full $76 million until money comes out of escrow.
That was the primary intent of doing the note, and that positions us well in front of the rating agencies as well.
Okay. Let's make sure that, I think, citizens understand that sequence because it is a little different than the plan that we've talked about really extensively a year ago. I want people to make sure they understand that we're still being pretty prudent in kind of that approach. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connelly?
Thanks for that, and thanks, Ms. Hardy, for going over that sequence because that was a question I had. And then the rest of the sequence, once we take out the larger bond in the summertime, will this $20 million be wrapped into that or will this be held out as a separate bridge loan? Will it remain as a bridge loan?
No, well, since this is only paying for the interest, so the intent is that when we issue the general obligation bonds, we pay out this, and then we just hold.
Okay, so this will just be wrapped into this second tranche?
Yeah, so the total debt assumed is not going to exceed $76,000.
So the first thing we do with the bond proceeds is pay off that short-term note, and it would just go away?
Got it. And then when will we issue the second tranche or the third tranche for the high school? That will be issued next fiscal year in 2020?
Summer of '20, summer of fiscal year 2020.
Summer?
Yeah.
Okay, so like a year from now?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. So could I take us down just a little bit on the acquisition of parkland, the Fellow's property, right? So I've sort of always seen that property as a kind of a carbon offset for, you know, the removal of trees that we know we're going to be undertaking. We've already undertaken it at Broad and West, got rid of the scrub vegetation there, but, you know, the West End project is going to involve some removal of mature trees. And so one appealing element of the Fellow's property was that by buying it and setting it aside as open space, we would protect the trees that are there now, which certainly would have been removed if the land had been subdivided and turned into seven single-family homes. So my question is, and I see the city attorney's not here, but is our timetable for the Fellow's property being officially acquired and the structure that's there now being removed and so forth, that's still on track to happen this summer or early fall?
The acquisition is any day now. The ball is, I think, in the seller's court on some documentation, but that is imminent. The securing of the property and the demolition of the house, that also would be done within, that is late summer, early fall timeframe.
Okay, but it hasn't slipped beyond that, as far as we know. Still something we ought to be able to check off the list before the end of the year.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. And my other comment or question, I guess, surrounds the lines 131 through 137, where we talk about things that are complicated, about our payout ratio requirement and all that, which I won't go into. But the number that caught my eye was the city's, in order to remain in compliance with our financial standards, the city would maintain available fund balance of no less than 15% of expenditures. And then the final sentence says, "The city's available fund balance as of June 30th, 2018, was 35.3%." So that's about a year ago now. Is it reasonable to be able to guess that when we end this fiscal year at the end of June, that that number will be, what, about that, about the same, a little more, a little less? How are we, as we, you know, get up to the starting line and really get going on all this, what is our available fund balance number estimate?
At the end of June 30th, 2019, it's going to be about the same, but at the end of June 2020, it's going to be much lower because that's when, as we saw in the fiscal year '20 budget, we're starting to draw down on the capital reserves. So capital reserves is part of the available fund balance.
Right, but as we undertake all that we are undertaking, we are certainly where we thought we would be a year or so ago, if not a little better. We're at least where we hoped we would be going into all of this strategy. Okay, thank you.
All right. Just by way of explanation, from our students, we're talking about funding the high school predominantly, so it's kind of like a bond is like a mortgage, like a mortgage in your house. And so we're trying to figure out the best way to do that financially for the city, whether it's break it up into smaller pieces to mitigate risk and only borrow money as you need it. So anyway, that's part of what we're talking about. The Fellow's Property is another piece of investment the city's making. You may or may not have heard of that, but it's going to be a small park across from TJ. So it's an old house that the owner wanted to put a bunch of houses on, and the city wanted to acquire some more open space. And so we're about to close on the purchase of that property, and so hopefully, we'll be able to put some more trees and some places for people to spend a little bit of time, but that's what the Fellow's Property is about. So anyways, far as questions, Ms. Hardy, did you have another one?
I did. One thing to clarify, so I know as part of doing this, the two-step issuance, the library is not included in that $20 million. And so with the original plan where we would be issuing the full $76 million this summer, and now that full 76 wouldn't get issued until the fall, does that impact the library project in any way? I know several have had some anxiety about just where we were coming out on the project anyway.
So library project is expecting to do their GMP around, have a price by fall of this year, and construction to begin by December, November, December, so that places us well in good timing for the general obligation bond. So we did not need to include that in the bridge funding.
So we'll get an update on what the GMP is before we then have to issue tranche two?
Right. They included a funding of $1 million in the 2018 bond issuance, so that is going to last them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move on to the next item. Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Nice work. Appreciate it. I know our students were texting about all the exciting things that are happening here at our city council meeting. So, all right, welcome, Mr. Stoddard. Welcome.
We're very excited tonight to bring to council three chapters of the comp plan, and the request tonight for all three chapters is to hear a presentation, get your feedback in your staff reports. There are generally identified some specific questions where we're seeking input. And ultimately, in terms of the schedule, each one of these chapters has been before you before. We've had input through our committees, and so the request ultimately is to move towards the July adoption of these chapters. So we're getting towards the home stretch for each of these, but we want your input. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stoddard and to Shayna.
All right, thank you, Wyatt. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. Also with me tonight is one of our staff planners. She initially... Is that better? I'll assume yes. All right, let's see. Thank you, Wyatt. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of city council. Also with me tonight is Shayna Schaefer, one of our staff planners. She's going to speak later about natural resources, but I'm going to take the lead off position and talk about demographics and the housing chapters. Let's see, demographics has come to you before, and I guess before I jump into that substance, I just want to reiterate some of the things Wyatt said about the schedule for this. On the back of all of your staff reports, there is a schedule of public engagement events. Many of these materials first came to you in mid to late 2018. Currently, staff is out talking to all of the boards and commissions about these draft materials. There is an upcoming public meeting on Saturday, June 8. There's also a public survey that we expect to launch later this work week, of course giving us staff a little bit of time to fold in the feedback from council tonight. All of the surveys are intended to be about 10 minutes each, one for each of the three chapters, to enable residents, visitors, folks interested in the city, to be able to complete all three services if they wish, or only those components that they're most interested in. As Wyatt said, the schedule is to bring this back to council for a work session in mid-June, then have work sessions with the planning commission, and come back for council action in July '22. That last date appears off schedule here, but it is included in the other staff reports. Of course, for all these chapters, staff is looking for input from the council tonight. Are these three chapters tackling the right issues? Do they have the right vision for the statement? Do they have the right strategies and actions? As we take this out to the public, this is, of course, a good time to be making sure staff is going in the right direction so that we're providing the community the services and tools that it needs. Let's see, I think I'm going to jump into the presentations next. So I'm going to move... staff is going in the right direction so that we're providing the community the services and tools that it needs. Let's see, I think I'm going to jump into the presentations next. So I'm going to move through some of this content fairly quickly because it is not the first time the council has seen it. But I will say, the presentation for the demographics materials, oh, good, there is a screen facing the audience. The work is broken down into three pieces for the scope of work. First is trends, second is connections, and third is connections and strategies. So trends, where has the city been? Projections, where is the city going? And connections, how does this information relate to the business of the city? Demographic trends, and there are highlights here. Single-person households are on the rise in the city. Currently, about one in every three households is now a single-person household within the city, which is up from where it was previously. And the overall number of households with children has actually declined. Staff presented this material first in a work session late last year, but it's this duality that over the last 10 years, the total number of children in the city has gone up, but the number of households with children has actually gone down. And that's a function of the households with kids having more kids than they did before. The city's also getting older, that now one out of every four residents of the city is 55 years or older. City, unlike other areas around it, has seen a surge in the percentage of households making between $50,000 and $100,000. The hypothesis is that's related to the first point of the rise in single-family houses, as well as the rising number of small apartments in the city. And of course, that relates to housing trends. The number of single-family houses is still a very large segment of housing in the city, but it's no longer the largest. According to the data from the American Community Survey, available through the Census Bureau, number of housing units in multifamily buildings now outpaces or now exceeds the number of single-family houses in the city. Workforce trends. So what this slide is getting at is the difference between jobs, occupations, and earnings between people who live in the city and work elsewhere and people who live elsewhere and work in the city. Generally, residents of the city that are employed are working in office markets like DC, Roslyn-Ballston, Tysons, Crystal City, and generally holding higher-earning jobs, things in government services, professional services, lawyers, accountants. Folks who are living outside the city and working here are generally working in lower-paying jobs, especially service sector, as well as healthcare services. And most residents in the city do not work here, and of course, most of the folks who work in the city are coming from outside the city. Development-based projections, this slide is really jumping, cutting to the chase. Where in previous presentations, it took us the staff a little longer to build up to this point, but this is a summary of what's expected to happen for the city's population, household, and jobs, growing from a number of about 13, I'm sorry, somewhere between 13,000 and 14,000, 15,000 today, and going to a high of about 20,500 by the year 2045. Of course, that number's a lot bigger, 20,000. It's also many years in the future. The number of jobs is expected to keep pace, staying slightly below population. And of course, that's to be expected, that generally there are fewer people in the workforce than there are in the overall population. So actually having an employment rate that high is an impressive feat for a community. And then the number of households also growing from about 5,300 or 5,400 today up to about 9,300 in 2045. As we presented, as staff presented in earlier presentations, these demographic projections, three different methodologies were used to test the sensitivity of these things. First was a development-based set of projections, is what the city typically uses, looking at what kinds of projects have been approved, what are the configurations of those households, and what's expected to happen in the future. Second was based on an age cohort analysis, breaking down the existing population into different age bands, aging those and accounting for fertility, death, and in migration, out migration. That's the same method that Weldon Cooper uses. And then the third was economic-based, so looking at what is the projected increase in regional jobs, what percentage of different job markets typically house in the city, and what would it mean for the city if those same percentages came back? Connections and strategies, this is the new material for council this time, and this is also captured in the draft chapter. It's exploring that third piece of the scope of work, the connections. What does this information mean for how the city's going to grow and develop? First is looking at housing supply and growth management. And here, the suggested strategy is to continue to use the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, other growth management strategies to guide investment and development into the areas most appropriate for the city. The city long ago identified the planning opportunity areas, more recently, the revitalization districts, generally the commercial corridors of the city. And staff is still of the opinion that that's a good place to have most of this development go. Housing affordability, looking at what can be done to increase affordability, and we'll talk about this more in the housing chapter, but it's, there are a lot of different angles toward affordability. It could be aging in place, it could be homeownership for folks trying to get into the market, it could be affordable rents for folks who aren't looking to buy yet, it could be affordability for different household sizes, whether that's single person, two people, families just getting started, or families that are growing. And transportation, thinking about how the transportation network of the city needs to evolve. Of course, the city was very progressive when it adopted Mobility for All Modes and established a strategy of accommodating transportation demand, not by continuing to widen lanes and tear down houses, but instead to look to shift the mode share by allowing for more transportation options. Of course, bike share that just rolled out is an example of that, increasing transit service with the return of the 3T, and other progressive steps that the city has taken to make that possible. And then lastly, public facilities. One of the things that's important to think about when planning for public facilities is not just how many square feet are needed, but what's the right formatting for that building? So if the population is going to look different, whether it's going to be older or younger, it's going to have more families, fewer families, thinking about what are the needs of the public going to be, not just now when the facility is being built, but also in the middle and the end of the lifespan for that facility, whether it's a park, does it need more walking trails? Does it need more swings? Does it need more chess tables? What does it need? Looking at the community center, does it need more flex space? Does it need more art rooms? Does it need more tables? Does it need more pickleball courts? Who can't get enough pickleball courts? So discussion? Let's see, discussion, so as I said, the goal here is that this is rolling out to the general public, and the intention of tonight's discussion is to confirm with council is this going in the right direction? Is this speaking to the right issues for the city? And understanding that, of course, the demographics chapter is a bit of a different animal from all the other chapters, that it doesn't specifically have actions associated with it like the other functional chapters do. That wraps up, I think, the presentation, so I'll turn it over for questions.
All right, any questions? So after this, you're going to do housing and natural resources?
Correct.
Basically roll through it all. Vice Mayor Connolly?
So this is part of the comprehensive plan?
It is.
Right. Where does this fit? Is it the very beginning of the comprehensive plan?
It is just after the very beginning. So vision is the first chapter, which of course establishes where the community wants to go, what kind of community it wants to be. Second chapter, demographics, usually serves as the fact base to support all the others.
Okay, and this is the existing demographic chapter?
Correct.
This one right here?
Yes.
Okay, so this would be the update?
Yes.
So what would be great, as I'm looking at this, is a way for me to say how this ties into the other chapters of the comprehensive plan. So if I'm curious about household trends here, households with children, or housing as it is, you know, how it connects, it would be great to have some sort of reference point so I could say, oh, if I turn to page, you know, whatever, chapter seven, I can learn more about this.
Sure, like a little flag.
Like a little flag, or a cross tab, or a bookmark, or something that just says, if you're here, you can jump up to chapter seven and learn more about this, so that it really becomes an overarching umbrella.
Yeah, absolutely. I like where you're going. I think that does help knit the chapter together. That's actually one of the problems we've had with this update, is this seemingly standalone document.
Right.
So we can certainly add flags, we could say, you know, this impacts transportation, see Mobility for All Modes, this impacts parks, see parks for people, this relates to housing needs, see housing.
Right, right, that's kind of what I'm thinking of, to make it, because part of it is, with demographics, it's where we are right now, although we are looking into the future, that's just a projection, but it's really a baseline of this is where we are in 2019.
Yes. Well, it's where we are, where the community is, how the community got here, and then also, what is the community looking at in terms of the number of folks, the number of jobs, the number of households that are going to want to be here?
But as we look at this, we're not thinking about, like, here we've got 20, the population of 20,549 in 2045, it's the projected population. Do we want that? I mean, is one of the questions, do we want a population of 20,549? Or we don't, do we want to shape policies so that we get bigger? Or follow along that path or stay smaller? Is that a question?
So some of this is in the housing chapter, and this is always a delicate topic around demographics, and it's come up with a lot of the boards and commissions, the idea that if the council simply doesn't approve any more housing, then the number of households remains fixed. That doesn't mean the population will remain fixed. In fact, most of the student population growth or the shifting in demographics in the city has come from turnover in single-family houses. Those units were permitted, they were constructed. Absent council from action in the commercial corridors, what would have occurred was a substantial increase in a younger population in the city without a balanced increase in an older population in the city.
So do we have that anywhere in here? Because that's a really important fact, actually.
We could certainly call that out.
The turnover of older single-family homes to newer single-family homes, and what that has done demographically.
The other thing I was going to say is that the reason this can be a delicate situation is that as described in the housing chapter, there's federal legislation that speaks to equality in housing opportunities. There's also state legislation that speaks to a community planning for a sufficient amount of affordable housing for all income levels, based on regional context. So here, there is a growing regional economy, a growing regional population, and so every jurisdiction is expected to see an increase in population and housing.
Right, and in our vision statement, we talk about growing.
Correct.
That we do have a vision of growing.
Correct. And that's also a current regional initiative at COG. Of course, there's a forecasted shortage of housing units in the year 2045. And so that's seen as a constraint on a number of issues, not only livability of the region, but also the economy of the region.
Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. So I always love hearing this demographic stuff because I think it's really interesting and really should guide kind of the investment of where we're going in city. So to sum up kind of what I think we've seen now multiple times in demographics, we're going to get around 20,000 people in the city by 2045. Our population is aging, not unlike the rest of the United States where a boomer population's aging, and I think we have a disproportionate number of those boomers though here. Third takeaway, we have more school kids, school-age kids, but less households with children, and more single-person households, and our incomes have surged. Those are the main takeaways. And I know in the last part of this chapter, we talk about what are those policy implications? So it means, you know, we need to have enough housing supply for that population growth, it means we might need to have more affordable housing. A couple of things that jumped out that aren't called out, but maybe it's because these are different chapters that aren't being updated. So one is, what sort of human services do we need for kind of an aging population? Do we have the right investment in there? So with the boomer population growing, are we taking care of that population enough? Second, with this kind of younger populations coming in the city, do we know what services they might want? So recreation might look very different for them versus what we're traditionally used to. We've been very focused on families and kids and the older population, but are they expecting different recreation options? I don't think we know because we haven't, this has been a new thing for us. And then the third part is actually community engagement. So because our population's going to look different, are the channels that we typically use for community engagement, should they be the same? We rely on, for example, people coming to public comment. I know that if I weren't here, there are other things I'd probably be doing at 7:30 on Monday nights.
What? Watching this on TV?
Sometimes. But if we're trying to reach kind of a different population segment, should we be looking at other strategies? And so as government, I think it's our job to kind of figure out how we can reach a different population in different ways, especially with technology. We're probably not the only ones dealing with this. I'm just curious whether there's strategies that we should be thinking up, again, in response to this kind of evolving demographics that we've been very thoughtfully planning for, but I think we've got to make sure that the government's responsive to kind of a new population.
The kids love this, though, they really do.
I can tell, but...
I do want to highlight that, actually, there was a project meeting for bike facilities that were being installed, and we had a great turnout. And one of the things we asked on the back of the agenda was, how did you find out about this meeting? And about half the folks found out through the yard signs we had put out, and the other half found out through the Facebook post on the city's Facebook feed. So when we're thinking about public engagement, sometimes it's tested methods like putting out a sign. And then sometimes it is using new methods of going to where people are, in this case, they're on Facebook.
For example, when like traffic signals are out, like, people are probably not going to come and tell us or call Wyatt up. Like, they might want a number that they can call immediately or tweet us. And are we, I guess, do we have a government that's responsive in those ways, too? So I just want us to be thinking in that direction because, again, as our population changes and as technology evolves, we might want to think more thoughtfully about those channels.
Getting the word out as well as how to respond to questions people have.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
So could I, those are all great comments. Could I extend to include the transportation area and, you know, implications for the future? We've talked about this a little bit, but, you know, your chart there that shows the development-based projections and what that means for households and age and jobs and all that, is there data that projects out how many single occupancy vehicles we expect to have on the roads, you know, five, 10, 20, 30 years from now? I mean, I know a lot of this is based on statistical guesswork, I suppose, but still, I mean, policies are being implemented, as you said, mode share and so forth, that are aiming to tweak the numbers that we see now. Well, number one, what are the numbers now? The last time I looked at the traffic counts on Broad and Washington, they were X. I don't perceive that most hours of the day, they are bigger than X, you know, certainly rush hour and with all the construction going on, I think there's a perception that there's a whole lot more traffic on our major corridors all the time. Pretty sure that's not right. Pretty sure that, you know, we are going through some version of what Wilson Boulevard went through in Arlington during the years that the metro went in, you know? I mean, when I remember driving up Wilson Boulevard in the early 1980s, it was a pretty good amount of traffic. And, you know, 20 years later, when I was still driving up Wilson Boulevard with, you know, kids in the back and so forth, there was not that much more traffic. Even though Arlington in that period of time had grown exponentially and become much more dense, it had also grown in a way with mass transit and all the things that Arlington does that, you know, did not put as many single occupancy vehicles on the road as you would think given the growth. So as part of this discussion with the community, I would like, if there is any information at all that would, you know, let people know that we're following the transportation implications, we're not just building and hoping, you know, there is an actual strategy for trying to, you know, make ourselves less reliant on single occupancy vehicles. I think that would be a helpful thing to include.
The city does have a strategy. It was laid out in the Mobility for All Modes Plan, which was adopted in 2014. And one of the underpinnings of that plan was to accommodate increasing travel demand while holding the overall number of automobile trips flat. So the city's road network can accommodate a certain number of vehicles, and so you can use those vehicles more efficiently by getting more folks in them, and you can accommodate increasing travel demand by finding other ways to get people around. A lot of times with transportation, the problem is you get what you planned for. If you look at areas outside the Beltway, they're typically constructed with very large high-speed highways. And so as a result, they get a lot of traffic volumes traveling at very high speeds. They are generally not the walkable areas that people are chasing after today, whether they're looking for places to live, or places to recreate, or even places to locate an office. That there are plenty of studies out there about real estate development, real estate interest, commercial development, that is saying that the trend is towards these walkable, more urban-format places. You can see that with investment in places like the Mosaic here in downtown Falls Church, interest in Vienna, interest in Herndon, places that have an identity and an authenticity to them. Thinking about the potential for alternative modes of transportation, people say, oh, I can't get out of my car, I can't give it up. You don't have to give up your car. The idea is that what are the other options that are available to you, and is there something that can be done on the public side to make getting out of your car easier? The National Household Travel Survey, I think it was last updated in 2017, nationally, 20% of all auto trips are less than a mile in distance. And you think about how many vehicle trips are on the road, well, if you could provide walking, biking, transit options to cover that first mile, last mile, that's 20% of all the cars that you see. You could knock off one out of every five. That would pretty much solve your congestion problems. That small tweaks in the overall number, because it's actually very rare... That small tweaks in the overall number, because it's actually very rare when transportation facilities exceed their capacity. And everyone says, how can that be? I sit in traffic every rush hour. Yes. But then outside of rush hour, it's smooth sailing, not counting Saturdays and Sundays' peak shopping times. But in general, on a weekday, the crunch happens, and the afternoon rush and a little bit in the morning, but otherwise, people get around just fine. Your point about Broad Street, certainly the city staff members who are here during the workday certainly see it, that there's a morning rush hour, and then it clears. And then you can walk across Broad Street mid-block just about any time you want. So there are certainly options. You mentioned Arlington, and that is a place that provides-
For our students, we don't recommend that. That's a disclaimer. Disclaimer. The city does not endorse or recommend.
The, I've seen people do it. Let's see, the Arlington example, that is a place, the Ros and Boston Corridor saw tremendous growth. And yet, if you look at their auto counts today from what they were before the metro went in, they're actually down over the last 15, 20 years. And that's because of an investment in auto alternatives and making it easier to reach everyday needs, putting a grocery store near housing. So for example, the Harris Teeter, half the city's population is within a 10-minute walk. So, you know, having a handout or a giveaway of grocery carts could be a way to reduce auto demand in and out of Harris Teeter. Because I can't carry five bags of groceries anymore, but I could put them in a cart and wheel them home.
Do you, that's all fascinating stuff. Do you suppose it would be, I mean, it is, I'm serious. Why am I here from Monday nights? Because I find this interesting. Some of you back there in that room, you'll be here someday, too, and you'll find it interesting. But the most interesting thing that I would like us to be able to visualize, maybe in some of the documents as we put this out, is that one-mile thing. 20% of auto trips are less than a mile. Can we just sort of visualize that on some maps and the documents where, like, draw me a circle of a mile around the Harris Teeter? Or even just half a mile? Don't even do a mile. Mile seems like a long way for some people. I mean, I don't know. How far is a mile? I walked from Foster's Presbyterian to home on Sunday afternoon, right? I stopped at Northside Social and visited with Tim Stevens on the way and so forth. But I walked that, that is probably a mile, I guess. Tartar's always barking it. So I think it would be helpful for people to be able to see, you know, when the movie theaters go in at Founder's Row, you are going to be a half-mile walk from a movie theater. Don't get in your blooming car, get on your feet, and get out there without having to worry about what, you know, the traffic is doing at any hour of the day. I just, I think we need to try to revisualize what small-townism means here. I mean, my example of, you know, walking from Foster's Presby to home, you know, I had at least five conversations with people I just happened to bump into, you know, who were riding their bikes or eating. I mean, that is, people, we talked about this the other meeting, you know, the small-town, you know? We don't have a small town anymore. We absolutely have a small town. If you just get out and make it happen and have it meet, you know, meet it. Don't just sit in your car and blow down the highway. At least, I don't know, to me, that's, that would be helpful for people to see, I think. I think that's probably enough. Is the housing element of this coming up now later tonight?
Yes, it's the second item.
All right. Well, I thought it was, so I'll hold.
Just quickly chime in for the students in the audience. So to build on Mr. Duncan's point is, you guys can also just walk to and from school instead of riding the bus or asking your parents to drive you guys or driving a car. We're a very small city.
Students are actually too busy. Those of us who are like me, we got time to kill on a Sunday afternoon. No, it's a good point.
All right. So let's move on to the next part of our discussion, unless there's any other comments. The housing section?
Thank you. I believe the presentation is coming up. Thanks, Cindy. By way of introduction, this project is on the same schedule as the other, going out to Boards and Commissions Now, General Community Meeting, June 8. Survey hoping to launch end of this week and hopefully getting Planning Commission and Council actions in June and July. Again, same format, walking through the slides, discussing the vision, the strategies, the actions. Is this going in the right direction for the city? Is it addressing the right problems? One thing I did mention, that we did talk about the Comprehensive Plan a lot, just want to describe a little bit about what the Comprehensive Plan is. It is a policy guide for development of the city. It typically looks at what's going to happen or what could happen over the next 20 to 30 years of the city's future. This is a plan that every municipality just about in the nation has, although they're called slightly different things. It might be called the General Plan or the Master Plan or Comprehensive Plan. And typically, this is used as the starting block for all other guides for development. The reason I keep mentioning the Comprehensive Plan is because by Charter and state code, they are technically the authors of the Comprehensive Plan, and then the Council is the ultimate approver of it. These slides talk about motivating. Why update this chapter now? Of course, there are a lot of Comprehensive Plan chapters, so why this one? What does it mean to update the Comprehensive Plan? How's it used? How is it being developed through the public engagement strategy? What's in it? And then discussion. So motivation, of course, timing is an issue. The chapter was last reviewed and updated in 2005, which is about 14 years ago. And since that time, there's, the city's experienced an accelerated pace of redevelopment in both the residential areas as well as the commercial areas. There's an increasing demand for public facilities, parks, schools, decreasing affordability of housing. And with that decreasing affordability has come a loss of more modest homes in the city and also a loss of socioeconomic diversity. There are some slides we got late last week that we didn't get a chance to fold in yet, but it does speak to not only changes in affordability, but also changes in occupation of city residents. And there has been a shift toward higher-paying jobs. And of course, we can fold that information in to the next iteration. As I mentioned, the discussion is to look at specifically feedback from Council on the vision, the strategies. Are there other housing elements that need to be considered? Oh, and what are Council's priorities for implementation? That if this is looking 20 to 25 years into the future, what are the first things that the city needs to make progress on? So what is a Comprehensive Plan? It's a guide for overall development. It sets an overarching vision. The vision chapter is the first chapter, demographics being the fact base. And then it's supported by numerous functional chapters: transportation, parks, housing, public facilities, public utilities. And this is a guide for other planning exercises that the community carries out, whether it's a small-area plan, which is looking at a specific geography, or master plans, which are looking at a single topic in depth. Picture there is the cover for the watershed management plan. Also included behind it is the safe routes to school plan. I think also probably the, maybe the bike master plan, since it's in blue. How is it used? I mentioned it's an overall strategy guide. And it's used for public investments to inform the budgeting process. Every CIP sheet that comes before the Council has a justification according to the Comprehensive Plan. Not only is it good practice, it's also required by state code that any investment in a physical structure has to be shown on the Comprehensive Plan before being constructed. It helps to identify projects, and it helps to inform the private side as well. If the private side is looking to invest in the city and redevelop portions of the city, the Comprehensive Plan can set those targets, not only geographically where, but also physically what needs to be provided. Developing the draft, it's always a mix of inputs. There's conversation that happens with public engagement. There's also looking at what's already been adopted. Planning is not a blank slate that the community can't remake itself overnight. So some of this is a function of how did the city get here and what are the regional forces that are pushing on the city? What are the regional opportunities that the city can take advantage of? And then lastly, best practices. What are other places doing when it comes to planning for development and change? As I mentioned, this is going out to Boards and Commissions Now as well as the general public over the next several weeks. Content, all the chapters that the city's been updating generally follow the same format, looking at existing conditions. Where is the community now? Vision, where does the city want to be in the future? Needs assessment, what's the gap between where the city is now and where the city wants to go? And then how is it going to get there? Those are the actions and strategies, the steps that are followed. This is the vision statement. Since it is a quote, I'll call it out. And also, staff is looking for feedback on it. Create and maintain a diverse supply of housing that supports an inclusive community and strengthens the city's small-town character. Ensure that decent, safe, and affordable housing for all incomes and households is available and accommodates all lifecycle stages and needs. I can pause there if people want to provide feedback, or we can continue through the rest of the slides.
Where is that?
That's in the-
In the chapter itself?
But where is it? In the chapter itself?
So on page three, top-left side. Thank you.
All right. I got that basic thing down.
And this is a new vision.
This is a new vision. So one of the things that's played out as staff has been working to update these chapters is that there is an overarching vision for the city. And of course, that's captured in Chapter 1. And then there are various principal core values that the city wants to advance: small-town character, the three legs of sustainability, economic, social, and environmental. And then core government services. And then each functional chapter also has its own vision. And the idea is that each functional element should relate to all of those core values and the general vision for the future of the city.
So at the Joint Housing Commission and Human Services Advisory Committee meeting last week, there was a robust conversation centering completely around the words "small-town character." And there were about, how many people? 15 people in the room, and not a single person agreed on what small-ta- Well, Mr. Duncan, Ms. Hardy, and I all had an opinion that was kind of similar, but everyone else in the room had very different opinions about what small-town character meant. And it was a really interesting discussion, just to hear what people thought it meant. And so I just wonder if that's the right term to use, because it doesn't have a single meaning. I like small-town character. And I agree that small-town character is being able to walk down the street and see people that you know and be able to get places. And even though there are a lot of people around you, you always feel like you're at home in your town. But that is not what many people in that meeting felt that small-town character was. So I'm just wondering if there's another term we can use. And I know that's in the overarching vision statement, "small-town character." But is there another way to get to that?
I'm just going to pitch this out, not expecting to solve the problem tonight. But one thing that I'm hearing very positively is the idea of sort of the bump rate, that you can walk down the street and bump into somebody that you know, or you can say hello, or you can see them riding their bike on the W N O D. So maybe it's that small-town feeling that people have. What I've heard as an objection to small-town character is that some of the heights of the recent buildings that have been constructed or the mass of the recent buildings that have been constructed doesn't connect with that idea of small-town character. Whether that's because the buildings are too big or small-town character means sort of one or two-story. So maybe there's some play there on small-town feeling and sort of urban setting.
Yeah, I was going to chime in on that point, too. I think of the, my personal opinion is, reality is, regardless of whatever buildings we build, we're still very small. At 2.2 square miles, we're still very small. But maybe that small-town character just doesn't, you know, have a universal definition. But interestingly enough, we talked to the city of Fairfax over the weekend when we met with some of their council members, and they actually grappled with the same concern, where they felt like their residents didn't really, that term didn't resonate with them. And so what they used in one of their vision was actually close-knit community. So maybe that kind of gets to people knowing each other. You know, again, regardless of the size of the community, at the end of the day, you're still a pretty small community. And that feeling of intimacy and being able to run in and know people. So just a suggestion, at least from our friends in Fairfax.
I'm seeing reactions, and now's a good time to knock this down before it goes out to the survey.
So what, are you proposing that we change small-town character? It strengthens the city's sense of community or closeness is-
Someone can better word this, but it's just, yeah. I don't know what the small-town character, but I think what the three of us, when we heard the people in HSEC and housing, we all thought small-town character was fine. But just, you know, using that sample size of 15 or so, no one else liked it?
Well, there was, you know, of course, I was accused of having too much to say at the Thursday meeting, so I will. But then I was also told I could say more on Monday, so I will take the Vice Mayor's opportunity. There was said, I think, to be some phonyism to "small-town." We are not a small-town. I actually agree with that. We are not a small-town. We're not even a little city. We're actually a pretty vibrant, growing community. Now, in the area where we are, we are definitely close-knit and unique and, you know, all the things that we hold dear. But there is a certain nostalgia to the phrase "small-town community" that connects with a "things may never change." Think, any change eliminates that. And, okay, well, sorry, you know, we are making some changes. So if we want to proceed with some changes, improvements, and so forth, then maybe it is a little phony to say that we're remaining a small. I don't know. What do other people think?
Well, I left small-town, so I'm never going back to that small-town. I hate that small-town. There are other words here that really just leave me questioning, what do they mean? Ensure that decent. What's decent? Safe? What's safe? Affordable? Well, you know, making $150,000 a year, $225,000 a year, anything's affordable, right? What does that mean? Diverse supply of housing? What does that mean? So, you know, you start to get into this, this kind of, the construct just kind of falls apart. But however, I think that, you know, I'm not the best person to talk about this because I think that you're trying to get at a statement that compels that organizing set of words that people say, yeah, I can, I can hear to that. I understand it's difficult. Maybe just get rid of small-town, just city's character. Whatever that character is. And we have enough characters in the city.
What about, so what do other people think about affordable housing for all incomes and households? I mean, to me, that is not as kind of hokey-sounding a small-town. I mean, it is an actual aspiration that we have, that we have tried to act on, you know? I mean, what are the railroad cottages? Well, they are definitely affordable for somebody who wants to sell their current, you know, $750,000 single-family home with a quarter-acre lot and steps and so forth, and move to a more age-friendly cottage, which costs the same thing. So you're holding your equity. You're selling your current house, and you're getting a new place to live, which suits your lifestyle at a different station in your life. So, you know, we, I think there's some belief in the community that that's not affordable housing. Well, it's affordable for all, for one segment of our income and, you know, one slice of our demographic, you know? Is there anything in this plan, in the comp plan, that would steer councils towards trying to work with the development community to build more housing in the, you know, 650 to 750 segment? Because that really would solve a lot of problems in town. There are too many people here hanging on to houses that they don't need to be in, who don't want to leave the city, for good reason. So let's create opportunities for them to stay in the city, in newer housing that's more suitable to them, freeing up their old houses for others who want to come in and live a more traditional, single-family, quarter-acre yard lifestyle.
It is a shop-talk term, but that idea of lifecycle stages is what that's intended to get at. So when someone is starting out right after high school or college, they probably need a smaller place, whether it's just for them or one significant other. And they probably have modest means, and so they're looking for a smaller place with lower rent. And then as they begin to establish themselves in their career, perhaps their family grows, they're looking for a little bit more square footage. And then as their children move on, then they're looking for something smaller again. And maybe it's really a focus on accessibility, whether that's universal design, meaning the door handles are easy to open, or it is, like you said, it's a house without steps. It could be no thresholds as you enter and exit the building. And of course, at all these lifecycle stages for family needs and different abilities, there's also going to be different price points that are available to folks. I want to jump forward. That's probably not that interesting in the current context, but it's just talking about how many people live here, work somewhere else, and work some, or live somewhere else, work here, and the idea that housing markets are regional things, they're not local things. Let's see, estimated need for housing units, 650 to 720 units every five years. That's what that sort of breaks down to if you look at those projections that were presented in demographics. Need for different incomes, we can come back to this. Need for different incomes, we can come back to this. Proposed strategies. So there... This fits on two slides, but I'll step through all of them. The idea was to take a broad look at the housing market with these strategies and get a sense of, there are lots of households that need help, some more than others, but there are lots of households and lots of housing segments that need support or thought here in the city. First, incentivize... And what page are these on, Shayna? Do you know? In the chapter? It's at the end, right? Strategies. There we go. The strategy... Yep, page 14, if you want to see them all on one page. Incentivize the maintenance and provision of more workforce, moderate and low-income housing. So recognizing that there are different income bands that need to be supported when it comes to housing. Second, increasing more entry-level homeownership opportunities. Most of what's been built in the city recently is either one-bedroom apartments that are available for rent, or new single-family houses are coming on the market at about $1.5 million. So is there something in between there? Supporting aging in place, that idea of you don't have to leave the city just because you're getting older. Is there a way to relieve the burden of home maintenance so that you don't have to go out and maintain the yard? You don't have to go in and upkeep the house, which hasn't been updated since 1960. There might be another way out. Review and relax development regulations to allow a wider variety of housing types. And here, I'll make a plug for the railroad cottages again, that that was a project that was recently recognized by the Urban Land Institute, U L I, as an excellent example of ingenuity in housing in the region, that Falls Church is the first place in the region to have figured out how to do a cottage project under the development regulations that most communities here in the region have, that it's not a single-family house that's 3,000-plus square feet. It's not a condo in a 100-unit building. It's not an apartment in a 300-unit building. It's something else. The price tag can seem very high, at $700,000, but, again, that's comparing it to the $1.5 million alternative, which is the other option available for homeownership in the city today for new construction. And it doesn't have to be just cottages. It could be smaller condo buildings. It could be condo mansions. It could be opening up more townhouses. Create policies that foster greater neighborhood stability. A lot of people seem to be grappling with this idea of change and pace of change, rate of change. Where's the city that I remember? And some of this speaks to just the overall number of people in the sense that things are busier than they used to be. Some of it also relates to a sense of, "I've lost some of my historic identity," or folks coming into the community don't know that this subdivision is called Broadmont and why it's called Broadmont, or they don't remember who used to live in that house before it got torn down. And so certainly, working with the Historical Commission, there would be a way to put up more historic markers in the city. Working with other groups, there would be a way to do more neighborhood gateways. We could look at development regulations and look for a way to sustain more of the urban canopy and the mature trees that are available, and perhaps preserve those during teardowns and redevelopment of single-family houses. Thinking about people with disabilities, that they need housing, too. Miller House is a great example of bringing a project online that makes housing available that wasn't otherwise there. And equitable access, this is really getting at federal fair housing laws and making sure that discrimination continues a downward trend in the city. And then, number eight, monitoring regional and local housing trends, that understanding what's going on in the regional market will explain some of the pressures on the local market and how the city can... how the community can respond. So, to your question, it's a very long answer, but yes, the intention is to have a broad view of what's going on to cover multiple segments of the housing market.
I would say, with respect to your number six about disabilities, that we really do need, I think, make a kind of a push. Having a lot of our sidewalks, telephone poles in the middle of them, just as a community as a whole, I think we really need to take another look at accessibility throughout the whole city for that portion of our community.
Okay. So are we done with the presentation? Are we able to go through? Or do you have more? I don't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, the proposed actions, these are just samples, and actually, the chapter does a better job of capturing them all. And that's it. The recap slide is the last one.
Cool. Well, thank you. Thank you for all the good work on this. I know that ever since we started talking about revising the affordable housing policy wise, it told me to hold my horses and wait for this chapter, so I'm glad it's finally here. So thank you for all the good work on this. Going through the actual draft chapter, one thing I wanted to call out is on page six, where it talks about median home prices. It's worthwhile to note that, in the region, it looks like we have the highest median house price. So I think anyone who's trying to buy into Falls Church probably knows it and feels it, but I think it's worthwhile to call that out, as well as, we've had the highest increase since, from 2010 to 2016. My question is, do we have that similar data for rents? And do we have... Is that a similar story, that we have the highest rents in the region, or do we think our rents are actually more moderate?
I don't have the information offhand. I don't know if it's easy to get.
Okay. I think it's just a good data point to know, because we know it's really hard to buy a house in Falls Church because it's expensive. You know, where are we with rents relative to the region? Okay. And that probably has implications, then, right? Because if you can't buy in the city, but if we're still accessible from a rental market. The next thing is on figure 10-8. We kind of outline where we have affordable units. So in previous versions, when we've looked at affordable housing policy, I think what I kind of coined, that I think we really have a crisis, because we lost a bunch of market-rate affordable units. I do think that it's worthwhile to kind of show where we were previously, because some of the things listed in figure 10-8 are the ones we've set aside kind of in the ADU program, the ones that are committed affordable units. And then there's a handful of market-rate ones left in there. But somewhere in there, whether it's in the chart or in the description, I think we... Dana, I think we lost like 200 or so, like, market-rate units. And so I think that's important to call out, kind of where our stock has been, not just where it is now, but really that crisis and loss of affordable housing stock. And then, moving on to more general comments, I love a lot of the ideas on... It's page... Whenever you get to those project policies and things, one thing I'll call out, and I think I mentioned it at the joint housing and H SAC meeting last week, is what other localities have coined kind of that missing middle. So I often talk a lot about affordable housing for kind of our lower-income populations, but I think what's really missing also in Falls Church is that middle housing. So for people who actually have jobs, so for example, our city hall workers or teachers who can't afford to live in the city, they have really good-paying jobs, because of where median home prices are in Falls Church, or even rents, they have to live 45 to, you know, 75 minutes away or more. And so what do we do about that? That kind of true-middle class, I think, is missing. So unless you've moved into Falls Church 10 or 20 years ago, for new incoming residents for Falls Church, we are not accessible for people with those incomes. And I think that is going to have implications on the types of people, and I think that's that pie chart that you've shown us before. The second thing I wanted to call out is, for all those great ideas on... On... I don't know what page... They don't have page numbers, but those last few pages where you have a bunch of project and initiative ideas, all of those need money. And I think our current Affordable Housing Fund is now at $200,000 or so, and we haven't really put any more in it in many years. And so we believe that vision that we talked about, where we said, "We have to do more if we want to be really inclusive and have housing for all, you know, population generations." All that's going to take money. And we can fight every year about it in our operating budget, or we can talk about probably a more dedicated, sustainable source of revenue. And so that in itself was probably needs to be a project. So what option could that come in? You know, is it an increase in meals tax? Is it increased in the property tax rate? You know, what is this community going to stand for? And so when we talk about surveying the community, I want to see where... Whether those... That belief and that vision translates into actions and trade-offs, whether it's trade-offs in the operating budget or trade-offs elsewhere. I think we need to talk about where that money's going to come from, if we believe that's a vision that we all share. And then the third thing is prioritization. So there are a bunch of ideas on that chart. Some of them, I think you already listed, is kind of short versus medium versus long-term. My guess is, this is definitely like a 20- to 30-year plan. There's a lot of stuff that we need to get on there. I'd love to know what we're going to work on in the next one to three years. Maybe it's the Affordable Housing Fund. Maybe it's saving the fields, and then where that money comes from. But there's probably just some things that we want to call out, and maybe... I'd love to spend more time on it as, you know, as a council on what we should go after, because there's a lot of good stuff in there, but we probably need to pick what our top things are.
On that point, if I could, that is the intention of rolling out these draft materials to council tonight, general public over the next couple of weeks, and boards and commissions. Every plan is a combination of things coming together. As I mentioned, there's best practices. So this chart currently has been populated, and more things could be added, but more or less, this has been populated with ideas out of best practice, as well as the relative ranking of them in terms of which ones to tackle first, which ones come later. As this goes out to the general survey, the intention is to test the waters with the general public, to understand what are the elements of the housing market in the city that are most important to the general public, as well as what are the actions that the public is most interested in taking on right now. That's not the end of it, because, of course, the votes get cast by the Planning Commission and the councils. So the reason for going out to the general public is to gauge what is the general interest in the public for different housing strategies? What are the areas that most need work, according to folks who take the survey? But then blending that together with, you know, if nobody stands up for something in the survey, but it is a desperate need for the city, well, that's why you have staff to make that recommendation, and that's why you have the Planning Commission and Council to take those votes. So that is the intention of the engagement effort, is to rank these things and prioritize them. Short-term is intended to mean one to three years. Medium-term, the three after that, and then long is everything else. I can't remember if I mentioned this, but comprehensive plans in Virginia are intended to be reviewed every five years. So really, that medium term even takes you beyond that five-year mark.
Is that... I'm sorry. Is that a good question? Is that engagement effort to... Is there any way we can capture the Memorial Day crowd into that somehow? I'm just looking at your calendar, and it is an opportu... I mean, there's certain civic booths that I intend to be standing at, but... And I don't want to make you guys work on a holiday, obviously, but I just wonder if there's any way that some simplified, streamlined version of your... What you just said could be put up, and people could put sticky notes, you know? I'd rather have more emphasis on housing for the missing middle, like Ms. Hardy says, or I'd rather have an emphasis on how are we going to house these folks sitting right behind you in 10 years? I mean, in both instances, for my kids, both of them moved back into Falls Church, you know, within 10 years of where these folks are sitting right now. And, you know, renting, or whatever. Anyway, I mean, I'd like to capture the sentiments of the government class on this question, and also just general citizens, too. I don't know. Think about Memorial Day.
I think Memorial Day's a great idea.
On June 8th, is that as Tener Hill? Are you all planning to do your thing in the morning, or...
Yeah, typically, what we've done for the community meetings is a morning meeting. We're looking at about two hours to get through all three chapters, so it'll be an action-packed event for civics junkies.
So you'd probably do it then Farmer's Market hours and be done before Tener Hill gets up and going at around 11:00 or so?
Yeah. Yeah, the hope is to be done by 11:00.
Okay.
Can you go back to your 2745 AMI chart?
Yes.
Because it just suddenly struck me that what you're saying is, this city's going to be composed of city people that live in it with a whole lot less money.
That's the... The chart on the lower right is the increment. So of the new housing units coming in, that's the demand by AMI band.
You're kidding me. Nearly 50 percent... Nearly half of all future households are expected to be at or below the AMI?
That's almost exactly what you would expect, right? Median is median. Half make above, half make below.
You know, that's just too glib an answer here, because it's a very rich, well-educated, healthy community here, and for you to just give me that glib answer that, yeah, half is the expected.
I don't mean to be glib, but this is looking at, you know, the jobs that are available in the city, as well as the...
If it's your intent to drive us toward that future, I will take issue with that. That's all I'm saying tonight about that.
So you mentioned housing strategies. And I feel like if we're going to put this out to the public, we need to put some sort of radical housing strategies in there, things that we haven't... I mean, we need to say to people, "Would you approve having a building be a story taller if that would mean bringing in more affordable housing?" What about granny flats? Say it in a way that people understand it, so that... Because we're... You mentioned it in here, but if you don't know what the code is for accessory dwelling units, then you don't know what that means. I just feel like there's a... At some point, we have to either be bold and put money into our Affordable Housing Fund, or we have to do something differently than what we're doing, because what we're doing, pretty good, but we need to do more. But as a council, and as we're making policy decisions, it would be helpful to have some input from the community about, "What do you think about, you know, building a building that's 10 stories tall, so that you can have 20 percent affordable housing in that building?" Or whatever the numbers are that work, that has worked in other communities. I feel like we need to ask that question, at least.
Well, I think Vice Mayor, you need to also ask the question, since we're driving this toward half the people at or below the AMI that... Are they willing to pay? Pick a number, five, 10 cent tax rate increase, just to be able to get to...
Subsidize.
Yes, subsidize.
Right. I mean, that's another part of the question.
That's a huge part of the question, because you drive it to people that don't have... That have less income than they have now. I think it becomes a moot question. You know, I can certainly afford to live here and have lived here for a few decades without having any kids in the school system. Happy to pay that cost. I've said that before. I've also said that maybe one of these days, that Peter Newen name a maintenance closet after me or something. Yeah. But still, you know, I can afford that, but...
But those two things are tied together.
Well, you know, if you have a bunch of people here that can hardly afford to live here, then I think that's a good question, that can you ask them to, you know, contribute? And I think the answer's not going to be... Yes. Thank you.
Depends on how you ask it, right? I mean, if I asked that same question, like, "What am I going to be doing to enable these people sitting behind you, when they graduate from college, to come back and rent an apartment and live in the City of Falls Church?" What am I going to do? Right now, they couldn't do that, because there's an apartment in Falls Church that costs less than, you know, $1,600, $1,700 a month. But if I build micro-flats up at West Falls Church, then they can absolutely come and move into those, because they're all going to have, you know, good, successful, first or second-rung jobs. And what if I say, "I want a community objective to be that the people who work for the city, police, fire, teachers, they're able, if they want, to live in some kind of, you know, owner-occupied unit." If you phrase the questions that way, then it's less about, "What am I having to give up in order to get something?" And more about what is... How is the community as a whole, you know, increasing itself and its sense of close-knitness? What am I doing to help the missing middle, the older folks? What am I doing for each of these groups? I mean, it's a... Obviously, it's going to change. I mean, Falls Church, if we're going to get anywhere near where this pie slice takes us, it's not going to be what it is today. But I think it's going to be better. Because right now, the risk that we run, particularly if we lose the fields in three or four years, is what little diversity, demographic diversity we have is going to go out the window, just like that. And if there are people here who bring their kids to our public schools because they feel like there is some diversity in them, and if that's gone, then we're just like every other suburb everywhere else in, you know, this area and across the country that's affluent, and the only people that can live here are the ones who can pay their way into the way it is now.
All right. Is there anything else on the housing section? If not, we'll move on to the natural resources section. And good news for our students, we're almost halfway done with tonight's hearing, so... I'm kidding, this is the last portion of it, so you're coming down the stretch. So anyway, let's move on to natural resources.
All right. Thank you. For this one, I actually want to turn it over to Shayna Schaefer.
Okay. So this chapter kicked off last summer, and since that time, staff has been working to engage with the public. Also, we've been working through our boards and commissions. So tonight, we're here before you to give a presentation on the draft chapter and get council's feedback. This chapter will go on the same schedule as the other two chapters, so we'll be looking at a June 8th public meeting, and then coming back to City Council on June 17th for another work session, then going back to the Planning Commission, and then with a tentative City Council action date of July 22nd. And so, just to frame our discussion, there are a number of questions that we specifically are looking for council guidance on tonight. Does the draft vision statement address the right set of priorities for the city? Do the draft goals sufficiently support the vision statement? And are there other strategies, policies, or projects that the city should consider? So, those are the things that we particularly are looking for input on from council tonight. So, this presentation follows the same agenda as the previous presentation on housing. We're looking at why are we updating this chapter now? How is the comprehensive plan used? What public engagement processes were used to inform the draft chapter that you have before you? What specifically is in the draft chapter? And then we'll have some time for discussion. Like the housing chapter, the natural resources chapter was last updated in 2005, and since that time, the city has been experiencing population growth, and so that can certainly have an impact upon our natural resources if we're not properly planning for that growth. In addition, the city is also has the opportunity to begin to prepare for changing environmental conditions in order to enhance community resiliency. So, that's an important motivator in updating this chapter now. As Mr. Sotter had mentioned earlier, the comprehensive plan serves as the overarching vision for the city. It guides the city over the next 20 to 40 years, and it also ties into other planning efforts, including our master plans and small area plans. The comprehensive plan can be used to review both private development projects, as well as our public infrastructure projects, and the city's been working to update its comprehensive plan on a chapter-by-chapter basis. So, some of the other comprehensive plan chapters that have recently been updated were the vision chapter, the transportation chapter, and the parks chapter. And so, now, we're working through the three chapters now, demographics, housing, and natural resources. The comprehensive plan is intended to be a guiding document. It touches on a number of topics, including land use, natural resources, community facilities, transportation, and housing. It can be used as, to inform the budgeting process, as the comprehensive plan lays out any funding or staffing needs for projects. It can also be used to prioritize projects. We know that the comprehensive plan, adopting that plan, is really only the first step, but the real work comes when we're actually working to implement that plan. So, as such, the plan is intended to lay out the general framework, and we'll work on implementing that in the coming years, as we're looking to prioritize those projects. So, the comprehensive plan, the draft that you have, was developed through a number of input streams. Of course, the comprehensive plan ultimately belongs to the community, so getting public input is certainly important. And so, as such, there have been a number of farmer's market pop-ups that have been done. There was a community meeting held last August. We'll be holding another community meeting, as we mentioned, on June 8th. We're also going to be rolling out a survey later this week, and so all of that input, the staff will be working to fold that into the draft. We've also been working through our boards and commissions, getting some good feedback from those members, and so the next iteration of the draft chapter will be folding in those comments as well. Another component of developing the draft includes looking at existing city policies, setting the baseline for where the city is at now, and then taking an opportunity to see what else is needed in order to implement the vision and goals of the plan. And then finally, looking outside the city, looking at regional development trends, as well as best practices, and folding that information into the plan. Change is a major theme that is highlighted and woven throughout the draft chapter. The first type of change that the chapter touches on is adapting to increasing population change. As was noted when we were talking about the demographics chapter, the city is expected to increase in population by 44% by the year 2040, and so considering how that growth is going to impact our natural resources. In addition to our population growing, the city is also experiencing redevelopment, both in our commercial and residential areas. And so, taking a look at how that growth can relate to the natural resources, the city doesn't have to have one or the other, it doesn't have to have just our natural resources or just development, but these two can tie together, and we can emphasize how good urban design can integrate with our natural systems. And then finally, also looking at regional climate change, how to enhance community resiliency in the city. The content for the chapter follows the same general outline, lays out the vision and goals, which is the overarching view and general approaches that focus on protecting and preserving natural resources while building community resiliency. There's a need assessment, which looks at the development trends and projections and existing city policies, taking a look at where the gaps are. And then finally, the plan lays out strategies and actions. And so, the vision currently for this draft chapter is to increase the resiliency and environmental sustainability of the city by protecting, restoring, and enhancing the city's natural resources, increasing the use of green infrastructure, reducing resource consumption and waste, and using the latest building techniques to minimize environmental impacts and enhance community quality of life. And so, we'll be looking to council tonight to get some further feedback on this vision, see if this is the right track for this chapter. There are four component goals that fall out of that vision. These follow the topics of climate and air, stormwater streams and natural springs, urban forest and biodiversity, and solid waste. Not reading through all of these goals, but just kind of highlighting some of those. For climate and air, we have the goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 80% by 2050. That goes along with COGS, greenhouse gas emission goals. For stormwater streams and natural springs, continuing to protect the water resources, both within the city as well as the larger Chesapeake Bay. For urban forest and biodiversity, looking to protect and enhance the city's existing tree canopy and green spaces. And then for solid waste, looking to reduce solid waste to zero. Again, as I mentioned, there's a needs assessment portion for each of those four sections, looking at development trends and projections, evaluating existing policies, programs, and projects, and then considering what else would be needed to get the city to implementing the vision and goals of the plan. Each section also includes a number of strategies. These are the general approaches to carry out the goals of the plan. And so, there are a few examples shown here, including reducing energy consumption, increasing energy efficiency, promoting the use of, creating incentives for and providing infrastructure for electric vehicles, preserving mature trees during residential development, and so forth. And so, these are, again, are just a few highlights from the draft chapter. And then finally, the chapter concludes with proposed policy actions, and these were all grouped together, since many of the actions touch on more than one topic. For example, the green building policy, it doesn't just touch on the climate and air section, but it also has components for stormwater and urban forestry as well. So, we broke, instead of having those broken out by section, we have all the policy actions lumped together at the end. And so, these include such things as establishing a green building policy for private development and redevelopment, developing a zero-waste plan, and so forth. And so, these are all enumerated within the plan. And so, with that, we'd like to open it up for any questions or discussion.
All right, thank you very much. Discussion, comments?
Dan.
Not sure he wants to.
I'll go last.
All right, Ms. Hardy, you're up.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Z. So, I know a lot less about this, and my comments will be brief, for which I'm sure everyone will appreciate. Going back to the vision, so sharing the feedback from, I have this comment as well, but sharing the feedback from, I think, the joint HSEC and Housing Meeting, it's a really long vision, and it's kind of jargony. So, I think my sense is I have a hard time understanding what most of that means, and so maybe if we could make it a little more accessible, it would resonate more with people, and people then would kind of embrace it more. It's just also pretty long, so maybe there's a shorter version of it. A really tactical thing, so because of where Granicus documents are, the link right now doesn't actually take you to the draft chapter, it takes us to the appendix. I have been able to review the draft chapter, so that's why my comments are also going to be brief. I'm only looking at the appendix, which I didn't understand most of it, I will admit. And then my other comment was really around the composting. So, I saw that was one of the strategies, to kind of increase residential composting to 75%, I think is what the goal, is the idea. I've heard really great feedback from all the residents who do the program, so I think it's worth a discussion of, you know, does it require continued city subsidies to kind of roll it out? What if we just made it, you know, an option for everybody? How much would that cost us? I think I'd like to understand that. I also think there's a pretty big opportunity to look at composting in our business community. So, when we look at food waste among our restaurants, I wonder if we can find, you know, a handful of pilot restaurants to pick up composting, and that probably has actually a pretty big impact in terms of what they send out into the trash. So, just a small idea related to the ones you had there, but I just couldn't comment about most things, because I can't read the chapter. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor, comment?
Thank you for all this work on this one. I have been to, I think, three meetings of different boards and commissions with this presentation, and I feel like every time we get to the environment chapter, everyone's tired and is not giving it their full attention, right? Am I right? Everyone's tired. So, I'm just wondering why we're squeezing all these into one track? Can we not split this? Is there a rush to get this one done by July? Could we?
There's someone at the door. There is someone at the door. We got 10 minutes to go, guys.
As you walk out, when you say something like, "Green is good."
Yes. It's such good stuff in here.
The police will restrain you at the door. All right.
But I feel like we're not giving it enough attention.
Well-made, Vice Mayor.
Enough attention.
Don't take it personally.
Right, I mean, we just lost our crowd, but I just, I'm wondering, is there a reason why we're rushing to get all this done by July? And could we put this one on a different track and finish it by November, so that we can do one at a time, so that everything gets the full attention that it deserves?
There's virtue in being focused and trying to get these done. One thing that we are also sensitive to is that these chapters have been, you know, the process has stretched longer than a year now, and when you do engage with the public, it is good to bring it to a conclusion. And so, that is part of our thinking as well. Not to get it done just to get it done, but also, we've, a lot of work has gone into these, and our view is we're, you know, we want to push them through, but, not push them through, that's not the right phraseology, but keep the focus on.
I just feel like I can't focus, to be honest, because I've got all this stuff to read, and my brain can't take in all of this at one time. Maybe I'm admitting that my brain is small, but it seems like I can't focus on it, because there's three, I mean, they're linked, but they're different. So, it would, I feel like we'd be better off if we were looking at just the housing and the demographics, and then came back and looked at this later. Again, just my thought.
We can certainly explore schedules and feasibility.
A related point to that is if we're thinking of one community meeting, it might make sense to actually split them up, because it's got pretty different constituencies. You can probably have experts who really want to come and talk about the environment, and others who really want to talk about housing. You may lose people if you're going to try to talk about everything in one meeting. So, maybe you can still keep on the same project schedule, but maybe split the meetings up.
I have a dream of cross-pollination, that when the environment chapter first got started, everyone kept saying, "Well, we got to talk about electric vehicles and bikes." Where was everybody when we were talking about transportation? That it's almost like if the thing you care about isn't in the title of the chapter, no one reads it. I was so excited when I finally found a champion for the parks chapter in the historical commission, and we were presenting the materials, and I was asking sort of, what do people like about parks? And no one seemed to really like parks, which seemed odd to me, because I love parks. And finally, I got to the historical commission, and the chair said, "Ah, we can tell the story of the city in the parks." And suddenly, I had an advocate for the chapter, and I had some juice to get me going. So, sometimes you go out to a group, not because you're required to check the box, but because you think something really great is going to come out of talking to a non-traditional audience. So, I think there is a value, there's, you know, overlap in things like maintaining tree canopy during redevelopment, or talking about, well, what is the environmental impact of what the region has done, of pushing development further and further out? How many people drive in from Stafford County? Well, what does that mean for the environment? It doesn't really matter how good your gas mileage is if you're driving from Stafford every day. It's not that good. So, I think there's a value. As Wyatt said, these things have been out for a little over a year, especially when this is due to get updated every five years. It can be really tough to have a two-year planning cycle. It often means that you're doing more time planning than you are actually doing. And so, there is a value in getting it done, sort of placing a marker on what was accomplished, and knowing that you've got short-term actions. If you've got a good agreement on the short-term actions, you've sort of mapped out your three-year roadmap, and if you need to come back again in four years instead of five years, that's okay.
So, actually, I agree with the Vice Mayor. The ESC, the ostensible client for this chapter, they saw for the first time, the draft last Thursday. And so, when you say it's been worked on for the last year, maybe only in your mind, I know the ESC's worked on this, they've worked on a lot of it, and they've fit all this input into the appropriate place on city staff, and they're a little bewildered why none of it made it in. It's a whole entire different draft than they were expecting, and during that time, we've had a change in leadership, so I really do think that between last Thursday and July 8th is too short a period of time for this important topic. And I could start to go line by line, but I don't think that's necessary. This is an incomplete effort, it's a good start. I want to say that Shana's efforts in trying to bring this out and trying to move along have been admirable. And based on what she heard last Thursday, I see little threads of that being woven in here. I think that's great. I look forward to more of that. I met with the leadership of the ESC over the weekend, and they're going to come and tell you it's not ready. So, goes to your point, Vice Mayor. And I live and breathe this stuff all the time, so.
If I could, just maybe, well, it's obviously not a vote, but maybe a straw poll of the council would be helpful. At this point, if the public meeting has been noticed and survey's supposed to launch this Friday, do you want staff to move forward with the survey, or do you want us to pull it back? We can go either way.
What is, you're going to put out the survey?
The survey-
So, is it a, is it a rolling stone, that once you do this, then this has to all happen, or can it?
Well, I think this is to Wyatt's point, it's really tough to hold the survey and then not act, because people are going to say, "Well, why did I take that survey? What happened to my input?" If we launch another survey, three months later, they're going to say, "What's going on? What happened to the first set of results?" So, it really can cause a problem with the communication strategy.
So, I wasn't speaking to the actual content of it, like Mr. Z was. I was just talking about the overall mass of content from these three chapters, which I feel like is too much for people to absorb at one time. Mr. Z had specific concerns with the content of this chapter, so I guess that's two different issues, really.
And maybe-
But related, tied in.
Maybe you could, I know you met last Thursday, but I wonder if maybe a smaller group meeting with ESC, which is, you know, the leadership on this issue in our community maybe could be had in the coming days, to try to sort out what needs to be done, or what kind of suggestions they'd have, and maybe they've given some already, but more detailed, and see if you can keep this thing moving. And if not, if they've got some input that maybe this isn't ready yet, then we can maybe take a step back and see if we can bang this thing out. But I think probably getting together with the most involved constituent, whatever the word is, constituency in the community might be a good idea, particularly if they have some concerns, and they live and breathe this stuff. I think maybe that might be a good idea. I don't know if Mr. Z thinks about that as an idea.
No, I think that's a good process step. I mean, instead of doing this en masse, and I think, you know, I think all of us here have reconciled ourselves that it's probably not a good idea to send this out to the community at large, because the ESC is prepared to come back with, you know, stuff. So, I think your suggestion is a good one.
You could do that in the coming days, not weeks, but just reach out, maybe tomorrow. You could do that in the coming days, not weeks, but just reach out, maybe tomorrow, and see if you guys can make some good progress on it and see where that leads.
I guess if the.
You know, if it's a public meeting, you do have to notice it.
It wouldn't be a public meeting.
You're just talking about a staff level.
Oh, no, I could imagine that the trust that gets pulled together could be, Tim Stevens has volunteered as the champion for this effort from the Planning Commission, of course, Planning Commission authorship of the com-plan. Councilmember Z is the liaison to the ESC. I think you might be a good fit for that conversation as well. And then the new chair of the ESC, and maybe one other member from the ESC. I don't think any of those would be a public body, and it would give staff and the leadership teams from the various groups a chance to work things out.
Yeah, I think that would work.
We'd probably want a tree commission representative, too.
Could also have the chair of the tree commission.
I was just going to ask that, from a process perspective, if we find that the environment chapter's not ready to move forward, is it hard to split those things out from the survey so that you can proceed with the housing and the demographic questions?
Yeah, we had, staff had intended for the survey to be done in three component parts, each 10 minutes long, separate links, so we would just not launch the ESC portion of the survey, or the environmental portion of the survey at this time.
Okay, are there any other comments on the com-plan?
While we were on the survey, though, I really did like Vice Mayor's comment about translating a lot of those housing strategies into like real-life terms. Because I think, while we understand all that jargon, people don't really understand what an accessory dwelling unit is, or if we say ADU, that they're going to confuse it with what we've been calling ADU versus the region calls ADUs. So I think it'd be helpful to make it more understandable and relatable for people.
Okay, anything else?
Just your schedule, Paul?
Yes.
On the back, you have June 17th, I think? And that work session may be canceled? Did you get that word?
I have been communicating with the clerk's office on that. We're looking at alternatives. You'll see that last date is the July 22nd date. This is all geared on getting actions prior to the August recesses, that once August comes up, it's hard to get room on the agendas, folks are gone, they want to be here for the votes, and those are all legitimate things. Everyone deserves a vacation. So really, the schedule is building backward from July 22. There just happened to be a collision with June 17, but we're looking at it.
Okay. As long as you knew that that was happening, is your planning schedule.
All right, anything else? Thank you. I know a ton of work goes into this, and I know we come up here and kind of pick this thing apart, but.
That's what makes it fun.
What's it?
That's what makes it fun.
I figured, I could tell. But we do appreciate, and we do know so much goes into it. But I think the real rub on this, this is a community directive. It's a leadership document that'll be our vision for the next five years that the comprehensive plan is revisited. So it's really important, I think, to our community, and particularly certain constituencies in our community. So we just want to make sure we get it right. So very nice job, and look forward to continuing our efforts.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you all. All right, so it looks like our last section here is schedule and council requests. Are there any schedule or council requests to be made?
Does anybody know anything about the Memorial Day parade or festivities?
I think they're going on.
They're going on?
Yeah.
Are we doing a booth? Are we just coming to the fun run and then the Memorial Day service? Right?
And then parade lineup is about 1:30?
Okay. And everything else is the same as always? What time is the?
Hot and humid.
Hot and humid, yes. Is it 11 o'clock is the service?
That is correct. 9 o'clock fun run, 11 o'clock service at Veterans Garden.
Okay. Very good.
All right, is there anything else, Ms. Hardy?
Mr. Shields, I had sent earlier a request to give some updates on DPW things. I don't know if you had a chance to see it, because I think several of us have been asked by the community about those same things, so I thought we should talk about it.
So specifically, the sidewalk on Park Avenue will get underway right after Memorial Day. The contractor was not able to do it before, but they are now scheduled the week after Memorial Day. That's the, are there, what are the other ones?
The Park and Lee stop sign, is that going to be up before Memorial Day? Or is there going to be a new stop sign unveiled as part of?
We're putting in, what's, needs to go in is a thermoplastic stop bar and ped crossing, and we put down fresh pavement so that it would, so that that will actually stick. I think the intent is to get that in before Memorial Day, but let me confirm that. The signs are up, they're just, they're bagged.
Yes, and I think they're great, but it's going to be a pretty big change, because people have been expect, well, for some people, they expect the stop sign at least.
A lot of people stop there anyway.
Yeah, but for other people, they blow through that, thinking there's no stop sign. So we probably should communicate thoroughly about that.
So every intersection on Park Avenue is going to be a four-way stop.
Which is great. It'll help with speeding, especially in that stretch when park widens up. The third one, which we regularly hear about, is that signal pole that was down on Hillwood, and that's been sitting on the side of Annalee or Hillwood for a long time. Do we have an ETA on that?
Let me get back with you on that one. Yeah, it is a little bit on.
All right.
So the economic development committee, sorry, can I go? Just wanted to make sure you weren't going to adjourn. The economic development committee meeting would meet at 9 o'clock on Thursday, is that all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll work on a little bit of agenda iteming for that.
And the campus coordinating committee is on Friday, 7:30.
And GovOps is Tuesday at lunchtime.
Can you call the EV Go people in and have a meeting with them so that they know we're still alive? They know where the City Falls Church is?
Yeah, we're in contact with them.
Regardless of any issues we might have?
Yeah.
Need to have some FaceTime with them?
We'll do that.
Yeah. Regardless of anything else going on, you can do that. Well, it's money from the Volkswagen settlement, and they were going to, they thought we would be the first in the region to put in charging stations in the lot behind Clarence Dunn's. As it turns out, there are other issues here, and we've been dragging our feet for a variety of reasons. Lack of staff, lack of interest, other things going on. Well, you know, you want to wait till the time's right, the time will never be right, and that's what happens here. And so we have dropped the ball, and the first jurisdiction put in, at least they had their grand opening of Fairfax City a couple of weeks ago, so.
We do have our two new charging stations in the front of City Hall, and there are two in the back. And in total, yeah, so four stations. There are two little stanchions on the front and back, but four charging stations. So that is good news as well.
That is good news.
With that infrastructure, things will flow from that. We don't have any EV vehicles in our fleet yet, but now that opens that possibility up for us in the future.
Are they open to the public?
Yes. They're not signed properly. They are functioning, but they will soon be marked, and so people don't park there unless you actually have an EV.
See, it's part of our economic development strategy, right? Put charging stations near the State Theater and Clarence Dunn's, and whatever's going to become urgent, then you draw that kind of, the 27%, if that's a word, for people like them that, you know, they don't really care about the price of gasoline. But for them, it's a statement about who they are, what they believe in, and they'll come here, and they'll shop, and, you know, they've got the books for it, so.
Yeah, because they've got the app, and it shows where the charging stations are, and they're not going to go there unless the charging station's there.
And I do want to clarify, the City Hall ones are operating. They haven't been registered yet, so they're not on the app. And we have a few minor punch lists, but then Susan's working with DPW to do a messaging and a splash about the charging stations, and we'll message it to employees, too.
Do they pay for the charge that they get, or is it free for people to use? How does that work?
You do pay.
You pay.
So you've signed up to the system, and so you swipe in essentially, and then it charges on your app. Yeah. Yep.
All righty.
Just wanted to say thanks to the staff who were involved in the Civil War encampment and Cherry Hill activities on Saturday. They're very interesting. I don't think I've taken the time to stop and listen to that for several years. The tent with Mr. Lowe, Thaddeus Lowe, right, the balloonist, was very interesting, and inside the house. And there were folks coming through. My next-door neighbors came through with their twins, and trying to explain to a, you know, six-year-old about the Civil War is fascinating to watch. Anyway, it was a good small-town activity, and appreciate the staff's work on all that.
Move to adjourn.
All right, let's do it. It's planned.